Morning, everyone. I believe it's 10 o'clock or after. And at this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for March the 14th, 2023 to order. Don't see, well, we kind of have an elected official at DA named Matt Rollins in the back. Welcome, Matt. Good to have you here. Am I missing anybody else, Jason? We'll take that list from the marshal, please. If you've got a mobile device on, silence it, please. Thank you. And as always, we'll stand and have an invocation and pledge the flag. Hallel, Father, we are so grateful to be here this morning and thank you that when we call upon your presence and we gather recognizing your faithfulness and your authority, that you're here with us. We pray for your wisdom and your guidance and direction. We pray for our county and our state and our nation, our military, our first responders, and I pray for these department heads that work so diligently every day to make this county better. Pray in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living soul and a testament to its worth.
The February 28th, 2023 work session minutes and the February 28th, 23 board meeting minutes are available for review. Rebecca, there's still some on the back table right now, so you'll need to get a copy. Everybody's probably accustomed to that. Our Team Paulding segment this morning is Employee of the Month, Alexander Frick with Building Maintenance. Enjoy.
Alexander came to work here around four years ago. He's a part-time worker. He is a building service worker, and he is responsible for taking care of the first floor. And Alexander is just a super employee. He's one that doesn't ask questions when you ask him to do something unless he just needs more information, but he jumps in full force, tackles the project as fast and efficient as he can so he can get back to his other duties.
An easy nomination for Employee of the Month. We see him every day. He's always got a smile on his face. He asks us always the answer to any problem that we ask him to solve. And the unique thing about him is although he's mainly, I think, assigned to the first floor, he's all over the building. He's taking care of business when it needs to be taken care of. And as a part-timer, that's an unusual attribute, I think, especially when he works with some full-time employees. Many young people these days do not have the work ethic that Alex has, and we appreciate that. And I would love to see more of our younger employees imitate that.
Congratulations, Alexander. You deserve it. You've worked really hard. Just want you to know it did not go unnoticed.
Congratulations, Alexander. He's a fun guy. We have a lot of fun putting those on, don't we? Trying to surprise people. He thought he was coming to the principal's office. That's Frank's office. So I have no invited guests this morning, no bid awards, reports from committees and departments. We did most of those previous months, public participation on agenda items. First, we don't have any public participation. No one's signed up. On the consent agenda, item two is to appoint Vince Dekeco to the Cemetery Preservation Commission as the post-one appointee with a term of March 14th, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Item three is to adopt ordinance 23-04, which is a text amendment amending Title I Administration and Title II Zoning and Appendix of the Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County, Georgia, the UDO, and for other purposes. Item four is to approve a contract for the purchase of approximately 155.51 acres of real property, Paulding County Tax Parcel 132.1.2.001 and four zeros from the estate of James A. Morgan in the amount of $3,498,975. And to allow the chairman to execute any and all documents related thereto. The property is located immediately north of and adjacent to Paulding Northwest Atlanta Have no old business this morning, and we'll get into the new business. Item five is discuss action to authorize the chairman entering into a professional services agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for continuing supportive engineering services at a rate of $114.50 per hour, not to exceed $65,000 funded by general funds. Mr. George Jones is with us to report.
Morning. As you all know, the DOT is continuing to experience a high volume of work. Again, I think as you all know, we're down in staff. We currently have three vacancies in the engineering department, a engineering division manager, a pre-construction engineer, and also we have another pre-construction engineer that's been on military leave for a year and a half. So at this point in time, we're basically down to 25% of our workforce. With the workload that we have with all the design projects, development review, stormwater design, consultant management design, we simply need folks to be able to manage and work on those projects. Heath and Lineback Engineers has provided work with the county for many years. They've managed several consultant design projects and have also provided on-call engineering services for us. Since late in 2021, they have also provided supportive engineering services for the county for pre-construction. We're asking the board to essentially renew this contract with Heath and Lineback for a four-month time period in the amount of $65,000. Our hope is to be able to, at some point in time, hire full-time employees so we'll not be able to utilize those contracts. But until we get employees, we're having to supplement with consultant services. And if you have any questions, try to answer them as best as I can.
George, I'm a little concerned that we stay operating at 25% of the funded staffing So I'd be interested in knowing if we're getting any applicants?
We're getting a small amount. I believe we actually got one in this week, but it's trickling very slow. As I think, again, as you all know, engineers are hard to find right now, technicians. I actually heard a news story last week where, coming out of college, the highest-paid folks are engineers. It didn't specify civil or electrical or computer, but just engineering people in general. There's not as many people getting into it, and there's a high demand for engineers. So we're competing with just local governments, also private firms. And again, Metro Atlanta is obviously one of the strongest job markets in the United States, so again, that plays into it, too.
And following that line of questioning, are we advertising outside of Atlanta so that somebody might move here from another state possibly that's not so vibrant as ours?
I believe we have it on some of the professional websites. We can get with HR determining where they're advertising us on. But I know we're utilizing at least the standard advertising and also some of the engineering professional affiliation websites.
And I know that county generally pays less than like an engineering firm, but it's also more secure. Where are we in line with a company that would hire like Heath and Lineback? Where are we in line with their pay for engineers? Do you know?
Again, I'm going to kind of tell you anecdotally from what I've seen, but we're probably about 35% to 45% off from those numbers. And that's what we've seen over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It may be in the backup, but what we end up paying Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated for four months, is that a lot higher than if we had these positions filled?
It is higher. Obviously, these companies, they make a standard per profit. It's roughly 10%, but you're paying also the overhead for these companies. There's everything that goes into that, insurance, vacations, things like that. So again, if you can have a qualified full-time employee, it is obviously a way to, I think, better economically handle our work.
And just since this is a work session and an open conversation, I would support Commissioner Galloway's suggestion to advertise far and wide. There might be somebody moving here with their spouse might see it.
But you know, the thing is, I mean, I've been having discussions with George and Tara and Frank about this for a while. I mean, as much as the demand is there, you know, I mean, like you said, the engineers are the value of an engineer. So and we're so bad is you got people say like Heath and Lineback who can't afford to pay more than us because they can then turn around and we have no choice but to pay them. So I mean, I've worked a lot to try to get this to a point because it's not just DOT. I guarantee Ray's sitting there choking himself, you know? And it's something that this county is not for one project. I mean, these are many projects. If we were just doing one project, then that's, I could live with all this, you know? And you know how I feel about it, but we have to move on. But I just want to move forward to save the county in the long run because it is cheaper. If you're going to be, I mean, if that's the case, we would outsource everything, you know, from drivers to, you know, the workers in the field, you know? So I mean, Jason just screwed up when he was an attorney. He should have become an engineer, you know? But the demand is there, and I think it's just, I think we have to get caught up with time sometimes. And I think this is one that is something we really got to nail down and dig our feet in and be willing to adjust some things, you know?
Some we've got to take a hard look at. Also, the reason these things like this keep coming up and they're so necessary is the time to get these projects engineered. I mean, these things can't just sit on the shelf. We've got to get these projects engineered so we can get the construction side of it done. So I mean, that's, we're chasing our tails, what it is. I mean, we don't have a choice but to get this work done.
Well, you know, one of the biggest complaints I'm always getting is the time that it takes to get stuff done. But if you're at 25% staff, what do you do? So, you know, I mean, it's...
So, George, when these engineers are coming out of college, do they basically name their pay or is it?
I guess what I'd say is, you know, that obviously when you're coming out of college and you have multiple opportunities, I think people are going to pick the, they think the best opportunity for them. If you go to a consulting firm, I think you're opened up to a wide area of expertise, different locations, different municipalities, counties that you work for. You get more varied experience where you come to one county. I will say, working here, especially people who are embedded here, you get a feel of what's going on. You get a feel of the county. You know the local rules. You know some of the folks. You know where the traffic problems are. You know the topography. So there's a benefit to actually having a full-time county employee, I believe, versus a consultant. It's just, again, I would love to have a fully-staffed engineering department, and we did not have to use consultants. But as you said, we have multiple projects. We have plan review, which is a big thing. We have stormwater duties. We get calls from citizens. We get calls on projects. So again, you know, we need people to be able to handle the questions and work that we have. And again, this is a growing county. We all know people have moved to Paulding. You know, our growth rate has been one of the highest in the country, the state of Georgia, even in this area, and it's going to continue to be that way. People simply want to move here. So obviously, we would want to be able to try to meet the demand of services as best as we can. We don't want to, obviously, not provide the service that we would like to. We would like to meet y'all's service demands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next items, six, seven, and eight are to be presented by County Attorney Jason Phillips, not to be confused with Raymond Phillips, who doesn't know anything about legal things, but we're glad to have him here anyway. Item six, discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-04 in an order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a public sewer line comprised of 2,471 square feet of permanent sewer easement and 2,788 square feet of temporary construction easement, being project parcel number three, aka tax parcel number 180.2.1.015 and four zeros, located in Land Lot 761 of the Second District, Third Section of Paulding County, Georgia, by the Declaration of Taking Method pursuant to the provisions of OCGA 22-3-140 and 32-3-4. Is that Latin et sec? Et sec. In post three, Mr. Phillips will report. Item seven is discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-05 in an order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the construction of a public sewer line composed of 960.24 square feet of temporary construction easement, being project parcel number four, aka tax parcel number 180.2.4.003 and four zeros, located in Land Lot 823 and the Second District, Third Section of Paulding County, Georgia, by the Declaration of Taking Method pursuant to the provisions of OCGA 22-3-140 and 32-3-4 et sec, post three also. And finally, item eight will be discuss action to adopt Resolution 23-06 in order authorizing condemnation of attractive land for the construction of a public sewer line comprised of 269 square feet of temporary construction easement, being project parcel number five, aka tax parcel number 180.2.4.1.013.000, located in Land Lot 84 of the Second District, Third Section of Paulding County, Georgia, by the Declaration of Taking Method pursuant to the provisions of OCGA 22-3-140 and 32-3-4 et sec, also in post three. And we'll turn it over to you, Jason.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate you reading the three of those. Commissioners, what this is, is we have our State Route 92 sewer project in the south side of Hyrum, and we have three parcels there that are part of this project that we have not had any success in legally contacting the owners. We believe that it shouldn't be an issue, but for a variety of reasons, we've been unable to make sufficient contact with them. But what this is, are resolutions authorizing condemnations allowing the project to go forward. And of course, the county will be paying fair market value as appraised for the value of these parcels. These parcels, just to be clear, one is a permanent easement for the sewer line, and there are also temporary construction easements on either side, which basically that's a room to allow you to put the sewer in the ground. Be happy to answer any questions.
Surprised you hadn't been able to reach him.
It's been a challenge, but we're still hopeful, even if you pass the resolution, if we're able to make successful contact, we'll try to move forward without actually filing any condemnation action. But this is to pave the way in case we need to.
Okay, thank you for that work. And finally, new business number nine is discuss action to authorize the county manager to sign a contract with Talatrex to utilize their tracing services and software. Ms. Pollard's going to tell us something about that.
Good morning. In this year's ARPA grant, the judicial ARPA grant, we received, or the district attorney requested for this tracing monitors for inmates. So the district attorney's here to give you more information. I don't feel like I could do it justice. So if you don't mind, District Attorney Matthew Rollins will give you more info.
We'd be more than happy to have our District Attorney, Matt Rollins, give us more information, and then we'll pummel him with questions.
I love the intros today. Sort of elected, and I'm not sure what he's trying to do. I'll start by, I'm always, every time I speak to you guys or the public, I always invite you to come over to the courthouse. This is a great week to do it. We've got two jury trials running. Judge Beavers is trying a child molestation, and Judge Lyles is trying an assault on a police officer jury trial. Plus, today, we have Judge Bucci holding criminal motions. So we have suppression motion, bond hearings, all types of stuff. Basically, all the courtrooms are being utilized. I even saw the state court holding court today as well. So everybody's working. There's plenty for you guys to see if you have a moment to stop by and take a look. With that said, we have been utilizing Talatrex risk monitoring for about two years now. We're one of the first counties that started utilizing it. And the method by which we do it now is defendants who can't afford it will be released from custody, and this will be a condition of their bond, or it can be post-sentencing as a condition of their probation. And currently, the defendants pay for it. The issue that arises is defendants that cannot afford the risk monitoring are, the judges are then faced with, okay, do we just keep them in custody or do we release them on bond without that risk monitoring option? The Talatrex provides, it's like the ankle monitors that most of us are familiar with, but it provides more information and it has a much lower cost associated with it. What this does, the ARPA grant provided $100,000 to the county to utilize to pay for that risk monitoring. It provides the judges with an option that it can be funded through the ARPA grant or the defendants can pay for it themselves. I know there was a question as regards to limiting it to indigent defendants and identifying what their income is. The reality is, we are restricted on the amount of information we have as to those defendants' incomes, legitimate and otherwise. So knowing what they make is, it's one of the factors considered by a judge when determining bond. But I would not, I'd be going so far as to tell a judge which defendants he can utilize the Talatrex for or how they want to form that order is a position I can't do. We can't go that far. This is simply providing an option, and Talatrex or the ARPA grant pays for it. Any questions? I'm sure there are.
And when ARPA runs out?
Well, we have ARPA for another two years. I believe that's when we need to go back and we'll decide what this will do as far as whether or not we want to continue to fund the utilization. We don't know how much money we're going to be spending through the ARPA. We don't know how many defendants we're going to be talking about utilizing the ARPA Talatrex versus the defendant paying for it. This will give us two years of data based upon ARPA funding that we can then decide what we want to do going forward. But we understand, and there's no, it's the same thing we've done with all the ARPA, all the other ARPA funding for positions. We're very upfront about the fact that this will end at some point, and so nothing is guaranteed past that point.
And I think the cost of this is what, $5 a day or something for one of them bands? Is that correct?
The $5 a day. If there's a replacement band, it's $200. But also, if they were to, if the defendant was to damage the band or to break it or something like that, that's a different criminal charge as well. And then you'd be looking at restitution and a number of other things. But it's $5 a day is the standard charge.
And it's able to monitor a lot more than just ankle monitor, correct? Like as far as blood pressure? I mean, all different?
The Talatrex monitoring, location-wise, what I was impressed with, there's a number of different things I'm impressed by, but it's not only that the person is in this room, but what part of this room are they in? That's kind of that. It does, biometrics are also contained within it, pulse rate and that kind of stuff. They do have a situation where a defendant was found because of a drug overdose, was found in a ditch next to a road, and they were able to get personnel there to assist them. But we had a defendant that was released on bond and then tried to take off to South Carolina based upon new charges out of another county. And they were able to direct law enforcement, and they were able to catch him before he made it to South Carolina. So those kind of things. The biggest benefit that I've seen with the Talatrex is their monitoring. They monitor themselves. There's not a different or separate company. Where we've, we stopped really utilizing ankle monitors a long time ago, one because of the cost, but also because of the delayed reporting. We have had incidences where they've cut off their ankle monitor, and we find out two weeks later. And by then, they were already gone and just not getting that reporting. Here, since we've started utilizing Talatrex, we have that information provided to us in minutes. I think the latest, I think we had like a 40-minute delay between notifying and that kind of stuff. So it's the turnaround time on the monitoring has been very beneficial to us.
Is there coordination with the Sheriff's Office there to track?
Yes, mainly with the coordination with the Sheriff's Office is, there are other things that they're doing with responding to incidences and where you have a new crime has been committed and providing that information. But it's the deployment. Mainly Talatrex is working with my office and with my investigators, and then we provide that information to the appropriate agencies when we can provide that information.
Other questions?
I have a few questions. So are there any constitutional issues with having biometrics on someone, or is this something they agree to when they take this kind of monitoring?
It's a condition of bond. When somebody's charged with a criminal offense, constitutional rights, or convicted of a criminal offense, there are limitations allowable to be placed upon that person. One of those is the monitoring that is provided through Talatrex.
Okay, with the biometrics? That's already been vetted?
Yes, ma'am. That's, we've known that for, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, great. And then in terms of, it sounds like now you are letting people pay for this who can afford it. Is that voluntary, self-reported? They're saying, I want this and I'm willing to pay for it?
Yes. The way a bond order works is a judge is, you have from the thousand-meter perspective and the down-and-dirty perspective, okay? I'll give you both. From the thousand-meter perspective, the judge has made an order, said you're released on bond on these conditions. If you don't meet these conditions, you're not released on bond, and so they stay in custody. And that's the thousand-meter perspective. The down-and-dirty perspective is my prosecutors and the defense attorney, whether it be private or public defenders, are usually negotiating the terms of a bond, and they're determining what conditions are appropriate given that individual bond. And so this defendant, through their attorney, has identified that they can't afford the risk monitoring system, and so they've consented to it. And it's usually us providing a consent order to a judge. I would say that's probably 65% of the time is a consent. The other times are a judge has issued that order, and that's what it is. You're choosing, I'm going to stay in jail or I'm going to do this. The risk monitor is not an option for everybody based upon their charges, or a lot of defendants don't need the risk monitor, and so that's not ever even provided to them. But there are the defendants there. It would be appropriate for them to be released from custody as long as they had that monitoring. They simply can't afford it. This would address that situation.
Okay. Let's see, I had a, so I'd still have a question about that. So as I understand it, we're going from charging people who can afford it to giving it away for free to everyone that needs it or whatever that meets the requirements. Is that not?
That wouldn't, Commissioner, it's providing an option. Right now, those individuals, indigent defendants and other defendants, there is no option for Talatrex for them. This provides that option. I don't want to make it that black and white because it's not that black and white. When you're issuing a bond order depending upon that criminal charge, there are other conditions that might be applied in that situation. For example, drug and alcohol evaluations, anger management evaluations. For example, drug and alcohol evaluations, anger management evaluations, other things that have cost. And so when you're talking about somebody's income versus the conditions of the bond, this person on its base, they might be able to afford that monitoring, but we want to also apply, we want them to pay for to get this anger management. We want them to get that drug and alcohol. These are all additional costs, and when you add those costs, maybe they don't. So the judge can then determine based upon their income or what is, what we believe their income to be, and the cost of their conditions of that bond, where is it appropriate that the ARPA should pay for the Talatrick's versus the defendant should pay for the Talatrick's? This is providing that flexibility to that judge.
Okay, so let me just make sure I understand that, because I, I think I heard it a little differently last week in our kind of study session that we did to get ready for this. So it will still be decided on an individualized basis who gets a monitor paid for by ARPA funds and who pays for one themselves?
Yes. And my commissioner, they, when, if this is, if this is approved by the commissioners, the information that I will provide to the judges, magistrate, and so on, will be that there is now funding available. It is not that we are now going to do this. There are currently approximately 90 defendants currently on Talatrick's. We're not moving all of them over immediately to the ARPA grant. They've shown they have the ability to pay, and so they're going to, they'll stay on their original contracts. It is going forward, giving us that option.
Great, yeah. I just, I was a little concerned because as we all know, even though it's, it feels like free money when we get it from the federal government, we're all paying for it eventually. And whether it's in debt or whatever, we're paying for it with interest, lots of interest. So anyway, I just wanted to...
We could all complain about that, paying that bill.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I won't, I won't go into my explanation of trillions right now. We'll save that for another day. Thank you.
But the $5 a day cost of a wristband compared to them sitting in jail is a lot different.
We're doing a lot better, yes. We are doing a lot better on that side. Cost-effective is much better, yes.
Is there no way they can damage that Talatrick's?
Oh, they can. They can damage, I mean, there's, I don't think there's anything made by man that can't be damaged in some way, shape, or form. But those, the sensors are, within that can tell us when they do immediately. They actually have, I don't want to get into too much detail here on a public setting, but there are ways in which they know before they even damage it. When they're getting ready to damage that item, they are, there's ways of, of them finding out that that's about to happen.
Very educational work session this morning, Mr. Rollins. Thank you for your input.
All right, thank you.
That is the conclusion of regular business. Open the floor for any, any comments or announcements, celebrations that the commissioners may have this morning. Be quiet, okay? Well, we have no one who's signed up for public participation on non-agenda items, and we do not have a requirement this morning for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kaker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Galloway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 5-0, we stand adjourned.